Known to you by giving that a regular meeting of the town, Laguna Vista Texas will be held Tuesday, fall day, September twenty twenty four, at six P M. At the town of Laguna Vista, all one two two, the night as of Laguna Vista Texas, seven five seven. Two and six government votes, that's five five one, one one two seven. One more members of downtown from Mayas, San Francisco via video conference. Before the town council fifty present, has he been located, or having used steps, all order as you so wanted.
Yes, Lord. With it. We thank you for the opportunity to reside in such a wonderful town such as this. We thank you for the opportunity to serve such a wonderful town. That if you please watch over those that protect this community day in and day out. And that should guide body and judgment and wisdom as we do our best to serve those that you have been trusted to serve. The very name.
Uh, council member Tony. Council member Francis.
Here.
Council member Brian here. Council member Amanda. Mayor Carter.
Here.
Uh, council, uh, Miss Tony had a knee replacement surgery last weekend, it's on me to ten because she cannot, um, move back.
Anybody possible now, there needs to be a sort of you. You go to the right.
I don't know. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Member Francis.
Yes.
Council member Brian, yes. Council member Francis. Mayor Carter.
Yes.
We can start open forum with anything.
And, uh. All those experiments and experiences that start you, so.
In form of just finding the, uh, agreement. Down on the property, will you notice that from anyone else taking during the agenda item? Speaker must identify themselves and question anything. Seek your request for much presented to the speaker here, sir. Stanford Noel.
Hi, I just wanted to ask a question because I heard the thing that, uh, that is going on with the fire station, police station. And, you know, as a resident, you like what you're doing, I like to say anyways, good, fine. Well, I don't know how the process might choose selection for somebody to do the design for this building. You know, I've got fifty years of experience, I've lived in the neighborhood, people know that. And I want some reason, uh, that I improve. Till all of a sudden it's here. Uh, would be nice to help out the city and get involved. I still like to take that opportunity if I can. But, uh, I don't know, uh, there's been a process that I've seen or heard. So it's been an opportunity to take advantage and help out the city. So that was one. Actually, I, uh, put my name down for two years, right, planning zoning, and did, well, some experience with it. And haven't moved back, just to go, let us still on here. New appointments being made. Still, I think I'm on my. But it's not that great, man, up. Yeah, it's any follow-up you have to say.
Uh, reappointed to the C N B board and point, uh, pointed to the board, you're already on one and you're reappointed, and then appointed to the one that, or not. So the, the email is going out with that information, um, public information, of course, that we need to take, you haven't taken it out already.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. And first question. Mr. Michael Nelson. Alan, would you, oh, yeah, I don't know.
Uh, wait, uh, I'm, I'm not entirely sure which, how, how we went, how we got, how we went, process we got the engineering firm. To, to do the plan. Oh, this, I think this, uh, two meetings ago, uh, that, that, that. Actually, the original, how we originally appointed our engineer, had been with the same engineering firm for a long time. Okay, and, and so they're the downroot. Engineering firm that we use for the park and a lot of other streams. And so that's, it wasn't that we didn't, we had already somebody that we choose.
Well, that's all I have, I'm thankful that you're there.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Dan.
Alright. Thanks.
And consideration box collection improved following minutes, October eighth, come twenty four, break their next.
Thank you. You forget team.
Most due by council project, attended by council of Purdue, improved to October eighth, break their next.
Okay, next one. Yes.
Council member Alan.
Yes.
Council member Brian.
Yes.
Council member Brian, yes. Mayor Carter.
Yes.
Perhaps report.
So in front of you, you have, um, the, uh, same time, that, 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 uh, October thirty first. Now, for us coming out, it's two million seventy dollars, that's thirty five, like seven, seven hundred eighty. Uh, five dollars, uh, right. First fee. And, um, go through the, actually, which is your statement of revenues and expenditures. Um, you'll see that we are at approximately forty three percent collective for our, uh, projected revenue. This time last year, we were at forty percent, so we're about three percent ahead of where we were last year. Uh, for our expenditures, we are at about. We're at seven percent of our expenditures of the year, and first time last year was around three to four percent. Uh, right on track, uh, this last year. Question.
Nine, three, three forty four, fifty eight, two four. Another visitor, uh, vendor. Um, is that the same month because it, one is from beginning of October, and then one is for the end of October, so every two weeks.
Right, yeah, it's every other week.
Every, so twice a month, nine dollars for cleaning the office?
It, it's, it's for both the city hall and for the library.
For the libraries?
Yes.
Four hundred and one, I'm, one there, we'll name that.
The fifty is for the event, extra hours for the, um, fall festival event.
Open in one month, so is it? Nation, the Monarch Butterfly Restaurant, maybe should spread to twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five this year. Right?
Well, this is, um, a place that the, the town started, um, seven years back, and every year we required a place to, um, here for projects, and when we, our, um, city have, um, clinical research for, uh, for the monarchs. That's been the butterfly, by our engines, for our walking trails, and just making sure that we, um, are mindful of, of making sure we have attractions for the, the monarch butterfly. And, um, this is just something that the city that we pledge to do every year. And, um, last year, um, the men had the opportunity to speak at one of the elementary schools, and they, they, from a, a presentation about the monarch butterfly, and you found important ideas spoke to our community, and, and, um, um, you know, we continue, we pledge to them, that we would continue to pledge to the, this, uh, for this, and so that's what, uh, before you guys.
Is that real? The long one. Whereas the town of Laguna Vista is inspired by butterfly effect and recovery, rebirth and transformation. And whereas the monarch butterfly, the iconic North American butterfly species, migration and metamorphosis has captured the imagination of millions of Americans as a symbol of both, both change and transformation. And whereas the monarch butterfly population has plummeted ninety percent in the past twenty years due to widespread destruction of breeding habitat and environmental stress. And whereas South Texas, including Laguna Vista, is a vital breeding grounds for the monarch butterfly generation traveling to Mexico. And whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play in helping to save the monarch butterflies. And whereas every citizen of the town of Laguna Vista can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for both the monarch and other pollinators, locations where people live, work, learn, play, worship. Now therefore, I'm Michael Carter, mayor of the town of Laguna Vista, Texas, to hear about the claim that town of Laguna Vista will partake in the mayor's monarch pledge. And urge all citizens to work together within the city to create a healthy habitat for monarch butterfly to sustain and strengthen and continue safe migration through our town. And witness therefore, I, since you set my hand and vows the seal of town, Laguna Vista will be affixed this twelfth day of November twenty. If you guys look around, there's lots of monarchs flying around right now. Actually, there's one in, in my backyard. Really good, put your books up. We have a butterfly garden in front of the, uh, life, of the library.
Yeah. The, uh, eagle's house, like, in one of our schools.
As a fourth, engineering services task order regarding the Laguna Vista Fire Department expansion, especially in possible action, including new engineering survey task orders. Number two nine, sixty zero four, or development protection service, they, Laguna Vista Fire Department, building expansion.
So, uh, the council approved a, um, intention for the fire department to begin to help find how the ambulance that is going to be here, um, a couple things to be, uh, from the second zone. And in addition, it will, um, help the salvation of the, um, food truck that they have been, um, donated, so that next year they will, um, help provide, uh, covered, uh, uh, covered, uh, parking for, for those vehicles. So to do this, we have, uh, reached out to our town engineers who in fact give in the bid of, um, twenty thousand five hundred, shall we do two thousand? The project, that will include the topical survey, um, the systemic side design and close side design, um, of the permitting, um, a hundred percent of the construction back in, it's the construction base oversight and the total of the project. So, uh, the, uh, uh, so we're asking for who will, uh, of their, uh, service contract to make some, uh, refunding.
First.
Thanks. I was gonna say, you just said, we're getting, what is the main that's due based on the construction cost? And that's ten percent of the total level of, of ten percent of that.
So that, but they're, they're estimating that the total cost could be, is two hundred and eighty five thousand, and so of ten percent of that would be upcoming.
We're gonna pay the two hundred and eighty five K or if I just, uh, but.
We're paying at B, we're just paying at the, the.
Just engineering side of it.
Engineering side.
This is where we're just moving forward with our.
Yeah, the plans.
E M S plans to build to a future total sustainable E M S program eventually in the town, they babysit, year by year. And what we go with having an ambulance, hey, three twenty four hours a day. It's pretty straightforward, so. As everybody now know, we, we do have an ambulance here for forty hours, they need to leave. And in, in the meantime, we're also gonna help with the Salvation Army, because they have, they're, they have the only, and they've been awarded one of two vehicles that were awarded to the state of Texas. Or, uh, disaster relief, okay, and, um, it needs to be housed under. To be able to get it, it needs to be un, un, under some kind of cover, and so it's gonna be a shared service for now until the Salvation Army can figure out a more permanent placement. So, but, and we will have disaster relief available here in the town.
So this is different than the go ahead, because then that, they'll be about a step behind you, or rather, because it's what you turn for the, the, um, meeting, and so the next, you know, whole starts to be designed, I guess, for, uh, any for the, uh, thing. In the coming, in the coming year.
The one difference you'll notice is the amount at the bottom of the first page of the memorandum of understanding. Um, this amount increased to one hundred and ninety-seven thousand. That's how we originally designated. The, the, the latter police vehicle that we had ordered came in actually under budget. So we used our remaining funds um to put up the building. And that resolution will be presented. That, that check just got cut and so it didn't make sense. But we can, we designated in December. So from our funds alone, we don't have one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, um, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. That would be earmarked for the weeks uh that we didn't save. Plus what we designated on our fund that was um to. So um basically, our bid requirement for us to release them in.
Just to put this in any lease terms for everybody. This is uh, this is COVID money that we got years ago, actually. Um, from uh, from the federal government for COVID relief. And um. We're running out of time. It's actually very difficult to spend this money beyond now. Since they have to go through many, many loops. And um, so we uh luckily were able to dedicate this money to. Almost pay for the entire expansion of um fire department. So. Yes. And six, one hand review of the lease of these buildings, especially in consideration of the limited fees of these or a new building.
So Mayor, um, please, I'm going to screen the proposal of the department layout. I do have our engineering represented from our engineering team here up there. If you guys have any questions. Uh, we'll walk you through kind of the design. Do you want to walk me through it or do you want me to?
My name is Sarah Onda and I have this one as an engineering firm. Uh, we are working on the design for the building itself. This is uh pretty much a layout that we have about thirty thousand, forty-nine square feet. Metal building, but that will have some offices for the furniture sheet. Uh, with a great floorboard, house of blockers, uh, some uh, you know, restroom as well. Everything that has to be panic cap, uh, accessibility, uh, garage for two vehicles and so. Uh, probably you think the third part, however, depending on the beam, uh, we will give it a bit a smaller. You know, maybe small ATV or any small items that will be able to deal with um in the garage area. But this is pretty much a layout that I would.
Let me onto the metal building that, you know, in our big plan, our plan, the side plan. In five years, I'm thinking that hopefully have a bigger, you know, EMS uh building on one hundred. That we're doing a metal building that this should be able to be designed and created in a way that we would be able to later use it as um. Community center or in the public works, you know, work area. So kind of keeping that dual purpose in mind that this isn't the. The, yeah, in though, but it's um, it's a step towards, you know, getting them out of this um very tiny space that they can operate. And being a functional police department to, you know, our, our. It's hopefully uh, not hopefully, the, the plan will be to re-purpose this building, you know, as a. As a community center or public works. Everybody's side uh adapted. And then if you want to go, there's um, there's another. And that's just the kind of the other look of the layout of it. We're um.
Uh, currently they uh, they just got two in their. We are going to change the layout. The building will be uh brought in uh lower. And uh, so you won't see those kind of cuts to the front, but you won't see some handicap uh spaces, of course, which is the building. Here, uh, they did tell me to help bring it downwards, but none of this uh streets. And then of course, we've got to have our. The building, you know, where we're using the alley as the vehicles and that that area on the back will be with the fences.
So the, the police desk for the private event to go around the back for the least all the units will park. The police units themselves will park around the back where you have the numbers one, two, three, four, but behind there. They'll go to the alleyway and park back there and they'll have that private defense where, you know, when they're cleaning their units and they're doing all this, they're not just so, so exposed. And that's always been kind of one um weakness that we've had over here is that, you know, the oxygen is so, when there's times if you um. Uh, take care of their units and things like that. So um. And then also the garage offers a way into um on the previous slide, the garage has the unit that goes into the. The garage parking. So if they do have someone that they detain, we go into the garage and bring them into the, the police stations. So it's a much more secure process than, you know, having to bring them through the, the front door or the council room, you know, when you detain somebody. So. Um, um, and then like I said, the, the, and like show with the bed, uh, I mean, the, the parking.
Private defense on this and Isabel's side also.
Right now, it's not as good in the plan, so that this is, this is pretty much what we don't get from what's on that is about. Uh, that's what I think that we would like to add to the.
Ideas like talking about being exposed, very worried about exposure to the, to the street and stuff. We're going to do also one of private defense, I'm saying it's the bell sign and in the back though. Uh, the units would be more hidden, but probably students would on the back. Very many, there's a lot of different things. I hear we had a, you know, six pirates nails and then you have uh. Usually around spring breaks, you tell me you have the uh. Can't think of their name, I don't know, the last before they picked them and the film. Right? And then when he tried to tell him, hey, please back off, keep away. Oh, it's bothering my rights. So, oh, you know, we'll cut out all of that. Or press around. Yeah. And we, the cars just went in, in there. Yeah, but then whatever vehicles they, they park on, go on wherever it's ordered, whatever they need, they should be available. They, there should be a little sidewalk on that side of that building, the number one. So there, there should be a door. Uh, I think your door, chief's door, where they walk around. The back, back in there. For number one. Actually, one that we have now. Then we'll be all better than the beast part of it. It's, it's like the size of a.
He wanted to ask more questions for the.
I was just wondering if the, is the building going to be uh, meet windstorm requirement? A metal building with windstorm is pretty difficult.
One question for. And both by is, how much experience do you guys have with building, buildings like this? Because it's not a typical building.
Correct. So our, our firm has uh, we are training business uh for sixty-five years. Uh, Mr. is currently the one that uh spends. He, he does have uh the experience, has far as forty-five years of experience. Uh, throughout the years, uh, we do uh, I'll just say, well, we also do architectural and then we oversee the projects as well. So me, I send it, I've uh been working in the industry for eleven years now. And so as far as you're making sure that not just the architecture will, we're reviewing. And then we'll also have structural engineers. So the structural will make sure that it is wind stormed. And that we all have our the test, the testing instruments that everyone needs to verify that the COVID is.
Both proteins within the Rio Grande Valley that you guys produce that are similar to this that we could look up online. See like my whole thing, of course, I, I want to make sure that it goes its code and everything called checkout. But my whole thing is the aesthetics of it. Because I'm not sure what it's going to look like on the main, on the main highway here. You know, a metal building to me is like a storage unit, like going into as far as on storage for this goal. And I don't think that that would be aesthetically pleasing to a lot of community members here, knowing that this is not. You know, what we would like to build, but within our budget, it's what we have to go, what we can't go this. And it's important for our police department to have something, some, a space that is safe for them. And then they can do their job properly. And so I know it's an emergency for me to do this, but my thing is like, what is it going to look like? But the picture looks nice. But like, what does it look like in real life? Do you have any um other projects you've done that we could look up just to see like, okay, then that's okay or not?
The right, the right one will be the part one. That one is a current one that.
Okay.
That's a recent.
Okay.
It's not going to be metal on the outside. We're going to have some uh, uh, facade on.
Oh, okay.
There will be some sort of, I guess I said, um, it will be something in the metal and then you'll have some. You know, some briefly out on the side and then of course, what have your, your entrance that will be stored. Yeah. So I don't have that either or if uh you, I know it's that's like.
Look like a shit.
Same way, same way.
And the thing, yes, yes. Yes, you're an expert in this.
There's been, I hear there's work on the. Well, last few years, we've done three bucks. That was packed out of this and two of five, five, that's thirty-two homes, thirty-six homes going up.
Very good. Questions? Yeah, it's, well, not really required to.
Okay. This is just to make sure everyone might go with those moving boards. There's, I'm just trying to get any feedback and whatever. Henry says the way he's reviewing it.
Has any thought been given into expandability of this building in this location as far as possibly city doing its own dispatching? In the future, possibly some small jail cells, couple of jail cells.
You said, look at those things that we, we are not going to interface those at the moment because uh. In, in the future, we plan on moving everything to a much bigger facility. Um, hopefully a new city hall. I, like our biggest part in the sky is to move over our property on one, on one hundred. And where we have an EMS, city hall. Uh, fire, bars, fire, police, everything over there, kind of like what they have in most rentals in a much smaller scale. But um, that's a very expensive project and so hopefully we come up with the funds down the road at some point. And uh.
I was just looking at, you know, when the design of, of this current building is, is going up, um, to make it expandable.
Yeah, but that, our, our lot is tiny. And so it's one a lot right next to it. And it's, this is the tiny little lot. You can't do much of that.
It's similar to the current, yeah, the city hall. We put it as a, all of itself, but they only hold them all the time.
Yeah.
You don't want to keep them longer than, so they're, it's a, it's a less expensive route, but. The city of my health, the, the, etc., etc., the size of the police force, the training, etc. You want to say where.
We, I'm set up. Okay. Item seven, gratification twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five EMS contract, especially possible action, gratified twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five EMS contract with those present. Thank you.
So council, this is just coming before you just to do that, the EMS contract have full with this reference that we are due to the financial portion in the, in the budget. The president provided that to Britain and England that, um, so just act clear for us to clarify the. And we have time for these. I'm going to go ahead and hit them. And basically, I think this is everyone that the ambulance is coming and saying at the, uh, you know, it, it's been, you know, the forty hours and. Over there, I don't know if everyone's seen the ambulance at the firing station by playing on the uh. The additional hours are, are there to provide for that. And I think Mayor mentioned that earlier, but the, the.
Question to that, that is, from the point in fact, the EMS contract. With the corrections made.
All second.
Question made by Councilor Dr. Romero, second by Councilor Bryant. Complete the ratification of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five EMS contract as amended.
For metal?
Yeah.
Councilmember Holland?
Yeah.
Councilmember Prudence? Councilwoman Brian?
Yes.
Councilmember Annithens? Mayor Parker?
Yes. Item eight. N A S P L A boat operation and training, special possible action during N A S P L A boat operation training. Well, we, um, this one is brought to me and we thought it was a great idea to help to get our um. Our police department. Better trained to do the boat that we have. Uh, I don't know if anybody knows, but there, there was a body that was picked up in the uh, in the Laguna. It's like two, one week or two weeks ago. And it was our guys that, that, that found him.
Wow.
And um, so that kind of brought together, you know, in years. We've been very active when we had to do the shallow water stuff here in Laguna Vista. And we thought it was a great idea to do that. I, I'd use my topic chief actually and chief, you know, have some other ideas or some options that might fit better.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is a. Very high paying deal and basically is. Reference to like the terrorist ship come in and pursue to, to school how to run a boat to chase another boat. Is, is what this is. And uh, you know, I don't even, I don't even allow them to chase, uh, pursue anybody on, in cars. Much less something without brakes. So, and it just, we're, we're, we're not going to be doing that. We've already, most of us all been to uh. Pay, train where we're going, force the safety laws or whatnot, but if someone wants to run for you, then let them run. And uh, but so looking at this, uh. Operation has saved money. I thought, I, I thought the game was today. And he's willing to save money for us this, because I looked it up. So a lot of guys are saying that was uh. Of our guys, I guess, you know, top folks, top father, you, everybody talks about, oh, this free, well, it's, it's not free. And it's, it's expensive. So in order to save money, we could just, again, worse, if you want, have you come over here and give us a class right here out of our.
Thanks. Yes, I appreciate that.
And see if they invite the officers to. To go ahead and go in on.
What city did that?
FBI.
Oh. Did you get anything from this yet?
It won't come out of uh, out of, we didn't decide all.
And also, see, I just got to throw on this last hour and so I just kind of looked it up there and. It, this, this ain't about the train. It's going to be super nice. That, uh, those days and call the script like.
If you can look into that, see what the FBI has to say, but at, but at the same time, let's, let's also have the game wars come, train our guys. Make sure that, you know, we. Better use of it. I mean, and more safe for everybody.
I'm a serial killer, I have to say, you know, about the philosophy, you said you were going to have a year period graph. No, that, that is, that means. They invited, so so many people were, were going to say, I invite you, that's all. You, but I think you got to fill up so many heads for that, that money, whatever it's. But we'll get more reach on that, that part of it. Great. Your local league, uh.
Yeah. Now, the, the one locally would be. The game work, it doesn't need to be.
Yeah.
It's going to be a train. Let's, 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 let's look at, just looking at this one farther and, and that, you know, get more information on the item. Get it over to the Randy and Chief and so. Let's see what uh, the possibility does.
I feel more reasonable, more perfect.
Thank you for. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven, discuss consideration that and adopt the resolution authorized submission of the. Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Application to the Texas Department of Medical Services twenty twenty-five.
So this is going to be like a district agency, you click it if uh, the, the grant uh, uh, from the rest of the past for the future grant. They have changed their um policies and they just did the second resolution that allow us to, you know, post by their guidelines. To vote for the block grant for the twenty-five, twenty-six cycle. So this is just another resolution that um are uh. The grant works, the administration firm of these grants is going to help us submit, um, asked us to uh, to submit. So this is just the second round of that. Got it. I'll touch on this one just because I, I have it in my city manager report, but this is the one, um, C D B G just recently opened a um, another program. It will be uh, open until the, the twentieth. And it is, there's about four different funds that the, the G L O has remaining grant funds, funds in. Um, the two thousand nineteen uh storm fund is one of them, but they are remaining funds. So it is allowing cities to submit um letters of interest to um. Get additional funding for, for projects that fall into uh those categories. So the project that we're doing, our current trade drainage print, um, you guys will recall. Um, the cost of it was about twice as much as what we got grant money for, even though it's a million dollar, almost a million dollar grant, the project you can pass to sort of. On chat to break it, phase one and phase two. And uh, I've been working and talking and um, I guess a lot of projects, the problem that they have leftover funds. So the cities that have these ongoing projects are being allowed to submit a letter of interest. To ask for additional funding for those projects. So I would, I guess, our letter of interest. To hopefully get um additional funding to, to what, what I call, to the, of the credit that we already had um. Ready to go. So um, part of what the um, I think is strong about our plan is that's. They look at the one, including the initial plan, the same that originally approved the grant board. So you know, weren't enough. So um, I think we're a strong candidate and um, so we'll like submit our letter of interest, but that'll hold on with this grant. So hopefully we'll get another round of funding to, to this more additional um, of this drainage project that we have.
Hope we get it because of that project. It took a long time to get the money in and it doubled in price.
Yeah.
The thirty-seven matching funds, where does that come from?
That'll come from, um, this is for a twenty-five, twenty-six block grant. So when um, that cycle comes around, we'll do a budget line item to do the, the matching funds. But that, that won't be for um, probably it, probably the not next year, but the, the next one. Because it's not for, it's the twenty-five, twenty-six cycle. So we wouldn't probably have to have the matching funds until probably twenty-six, twenty-seven. Because the, the grant funds take almost a year, you're going to have to, from when we actually fly to when um, we get awarded, to when we actually get the funds. To when we actually have to write a check. So it's uh, it's not designated right now. Um, but it's something that will go in a um, like in a capital improvement plan so that we, 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 if anybody in the future will know that this funds needs to be designated. In this fiscal year, um, in support of this grant.
Are this, this the beginning of it?
No, I know, but then it was a thing, you know, we weren't. Waited two years, the cycle, then everything doubled, right?
But, but, but then with, with the block grant, so once we get the block grant, then we identify. We identified the project. The other one was to be identified the project first, first. Like, these are the brands that we use to fix our street.
The one we're going now with the G L O is uh, it got from the two thousand nineteen storms. And um, the, the previous, the one we did for Nanda and the bank for those last three, that was done, but in the last two block brands. The current one is done from the G L O with the um, uh. With the, the storm. And, and so that's the one that we're in the middle of and that has to be completed by the end of next year. So we start to treat through and shovel in every, you know, stuff on the spring, the latest. And um, and then this one would be the twenty-five, twenty-six block grant that will hopefully finish off this, you know. Um, and, and if, however, if we get the supplemental funds, we can take a re-project for, for this. For this, so it'll, they'll know about that one. For, for this one. And like the foundation years and with the other grant that we're taking advantage of with the resilience grant with the G L O. Will be doing all the engineer study, all of this survey, you won't have it much better. Um. Our, I knew we're current, um, we have the city, but we're in the tower of the street, the overview. The comprehensive plan, correct? Um, so that's part of the. Is out of that grant. So in that one, should be done in next, because before we have to um pick a project. So if, if the timing is on, on our favor, we should be able to have our comprehensive plan done. So um, you guys will be able to make the, the best decision for the town, whether it's, maybe it's fine. I'm looking at the board base, so the twenty twenty-four, welcome to the. Program operation.
Ask her. Yes, it's good to say.
I have ten point twenty four, I'm sorry, five twenty five. Terminally date of the twenty twenty four.
So, um, potentially you tonight, because we have the um. We got the email from the uh. Pyrotechnics, pyrotechnics, and so, for the fourth of July fireworks show, we have to decide pretty quickly now. What, what day we want to um, earmark for the fireworks show. Uh, because we have managed to get our show on July third, uh, that may is available for us next year. So, we, but we have to um, lock in that things. So, I think we know from the council that we're going to, um, we don't, so, last year, what we did is we made from the July date, we just went ahead and did the. Twenty twenty five calendar, so we can just bite on all the good as a whole. Um, the third is a Thursday, which I think. Friday, we don't have to worry about trying to do coffee for um, the city being closed, and um, then we. We're guaranteed our, our show on the third. So, it, it's gonna be expensive, if the, the price is what I have about fifteen and a half percent, so um. I know we usually go to CBT for about how many money, but the, the, the show last, I mean, it's about eighteen thousand dollars. So, it's gonna hopefully, um, mention the half like. And that'll go for the. For uh, regenerationist, and then you're going to uh, have to get our sponsors pretty. Pretty um, heavily, because the, the price is just going up, but. It's been one of the towns favorite, I mean, that it's a huge crowd, we funded our biggest event that we do, so uh. That, that's what drives the event town, and then everything else, the, the Easter color run, and we do the Saturday for Easter, this way it helps not come to. Memorial Day obviously, it's Monday, May twenty sixth. Then the ball festival. The last couple of years, we've always had it on a Friday, but the last two years particularly, um, most restaurants and quarters about both have Friday night. Home football games, so, I mean, we have a really great turnout considering, but I think it would be better for our community if we moved it to a Saturday. Um, maybe just try it one year and see what the response is, we would be able to have, um, you know, some of the children's family we do at Christmas. Um, but nobody's available on the Friday nights when there's football game going on, so, um, I'm throwing that there for the possible consideration of, of trying it on a, on a Saturday. And see how, how it goes, so we can tell. The more of the community to be able to become a part of. Um, Better Day obviously, November twenty, and then uh, our Christmas event. Having it on um.
That thing, October eighteenth is leaving. On Saturday, your, your fan big skin, so I. Thursday might be something that I'm more feasible for. And then, on the, I know. I am, was a big proponent of this at first, actually. And then it's Rondo and I did not want the fireworks, because it was too expensive. And now at eighteen K. I am shocked, I know it's a big thing, but I feel like right now, we're trying to. You know, find minds for different things that are higher on the total pool of importance. I think that the fireworks is not up there, and how to be pulling nine thousand dollars from our community. To find sponsors, like, I appreciate the sponsorships and everything, but man, that's a lot of money. For fireworks, just to go. Here.
Let me present library, and we say that. You know, what we're gonna be in a battle, I think, to um, to get it approved for most of the P D P, um, so we don't wanna. Have bring my person for a library. So. I mean, we, we're not, um. What, when is the date of the contract card? We might have, I think we have to tell them. We have to have the deposit by February first, so um. Yeah.
Fifty four was like.
Yeah, I think when I first started.
Buy a car with that.
Well, eight months, what's it gonna happen? Now, we can, now, we can, we should lessen the amount of show, like, so if we did less than minutes, right, would be. Shorter show for, for less. But you get the more money for your budget, or you know, the, the longer show, so, but that. We, we don't have to decide that question tonight, I just, um, I wanna tell.
Thursday, yes, yeah, so you got it.
I'll get him, I'm gonna see you together for um, December, um. Or January, I don't know, for December, and I can kind of get a feel for what um, they're coming to pay, and then that would give us. You know, because we don't have to have the. Deposits to them until the first, so, and they, they usually pay for half of it, so, and um. So, the year before, we had it a week later on a Friday. But um, if there's any election, even if they have to do that this year, we have to move it up because of the election. So, um, we're just now a regular polling place, so if there's any need for an election for. Anything, then we run into, that, that would run into the timeframe of stuff we're voting, so. I don't know how well a Thursday night, a Thursday night event would be, uh, but everyone is off school on Friday.
Uh, they're on Tuesday now. Well, October eighteenth here is. Like, when. When this fall starts. I think the fall fall is like.
Off on two weeks of the square and two weeks back to that. Week before Halloween, I hope y'all.
I mean, now Halloween is on a Friday, and on Friday the thirty first, I should have to do it on actual Halloween, but I, I mean, I think Friday.
City by Council, Brian City by Council members, which we moved it twenty twenty five town celebration base.
Member of the. House member for Nadies.
Yes. Yes. Budget consideration, possible action from fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
So, um, this is something for you guys every year, and you pay for their budget, and then the town council is um. Takes action to approve their budget that they approved, so, um, their budget's pretty, pretty simple and, and, and laid out. Um, but if you have any, any questions, I'm, I'm happy to, to answer. Um, just in case anyone's uncertain, um, you know, we're just a reminder to our new board members that. Sales tax that they get for the revenue, that hundred thousand, they get, um, basically a third of the sales tax that the city gets. So, anytime you budget, um, we get about three hundred thousand in sales tax revenue, so the CBT gets a hundred thousand dollar line item. And the, the general fund would get uh, two hundred thousand, and so that's where the, the majority of their revenue comes from. And um, they have, and then the promotional ten percent of the budget. That's a statute regulated number, I believe, that they can use up to ten percent of their budget, so that number is um. Ten percent of the hundred thousand, and um, and uh. I mean, I think we could go up a little bit on that, but it's just ten percent of whatever um, the budget is, and um, and then the other numbers are. I, I, pretty, pretty public one for the uncommitted fund that the, what, in red, that's what they have committed to. So, we have um, thirty thousand committed to, um, Mahia and Ross are doing um, an engineer, an engineer report for the, the Marina. And um, then the lease agreement for the uh, property across the street that they helped. So, for this fiscal year, that amount, what they paid for the, for the rent. So, that leaves them with about two hundred and sixty six thousand dollars of uncommitted funds that um, new businesses can come to, to. Seek to help, or we can use for economic developments for, um, how much.
I know they had, oh. Bring semester, we gotta ask. Cause when we're talking about our funds, so we can start with, you know, with a dredging, which. But either way, was that report for that? Or no?
Well, that's just for them to tell them what needs to be done, so this is just um, giving um, the, the, the study. No, well, I, I think it's, it's ongoing, when I, I met with um, Mr. Lozey and um, Mr. Justice about two weeks ago in my office. And they were trying to get on um, Mr. Ross to, to get it finished, the, the study, so um, it's kind of in the, is it not, not kind of. It's been in the Marina tent, that the view from the fund and the Marina has been the one I'm working with, um, the Mahia and Ross to um. To get the, the survey done, so, um, when I talked to Mr. Justice and Mr. uh, Lozey. They said that they had been talking to Mahia and Ross to get the study done, um, so, that's, they're still trying to get it, so.
Then they, we have allocated the funds for them.
I think it's been um, a year and a half, maybe even. To, to get this done, but L B R A. To pay the L B R A, the L B R A came.
To do the study.
Right, but we just held it over because we approved it, but they just haven't actually gotten it completed and, and uh. It's a feasibility study, right, so they just wanted to see, this way, it started when we started the ARPA funds, because they wanted to see what they needed to see what they could ask for funds for. But now they ran out of time.
We held that money in ARPA for so long.
Yeah.
And so, that's, that's why we had to move on.
No, I do, but, so, my concern is that, if this is already a year, and trying to take action with the study. Shouldn't we try to put the pressure on the, on the R A to maybe get a different. Engineering firm to do the study, or is it not them?
My, from my understanding, it's been, it's been, but there's, I don't think there's a lot of the, the Marina engineering, I don't think there's a lot of firms that, that do it.
I've talked to them, and it's that, it's quality next quarter. But it feels good. So. When they get it done. Don't really have a thing.
So, just moving forward, the CBT is gonna see that. I know.
Yeah, and I, I got the whole thing under my hat, it's about two weeks ago, really. I got the same thing, like, they told me, but we just talked to him, and I was like, then we get it done, and I'm done, so.
He got seven hundred and seventy one thousand dollars.
Well, the C D C, yeah, they've always been, and. Back in.
The council member Howard approved twenty four, twenty five P D S budget.
Yeah.
Well, resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen, considerations plus last, the three resolutions, twenty twenty four. Dash thirteen, we're in a channel of good to be communication or social media policy.
So, I, I'm gonna, I'll talk a little bit about it, and then I'm gonna get over to Mr. Suna, so this, this came about in. Um, one of the, the topics we discussed was the problems that cities have with social media and communication, and kind of how to combat that. And one of the suggestions that they had was that, um, we develop a, a resolution, um, or ordinance, um, based on. How you're gonna communicate to your citizens, and um, because there's a lot of, um. You know, should we respond on social media, do we not respond on social media, you know, there's a historical purpose, if you're responding on social media. As a complement of your personal, you know, how do you preserve that for uh, the Public Information Act, and so it's just trying to. Um, for the, the city preservation and just a uniformity, and so the citizens can know how we're going to communicate with them. Um, I asked Mr. Osuna if we could kind of create something that would um, help uh. Us as a town, be able to tell the citizens how we're gonna communicate, and you know, um. I think there's a lot of uh misunderstanding that, you know, oh, we ignore because there's a request on, you know, an extory account and, you know, it's. It's just not a good practice for a city to engage in that because of historical, you know, residue, because those comments can be deleted or changed and so. Um, we'd have to have a person on the full time duty to, you know, next door to the, you know. Post, so this is just to kind of help us, right, um negotiate how we're going to communicate letting the citizens know and giving us what we should do as a council, yeah, so.
Yeah, and the, the kind of deeper legal reasoning behind why it's coming up at seminars that the city administration are attending, there've been a number of. Cases winding their way uh. That have uh not resulted in liability perceived necessarily, but have raised some sort of. Problem areas or areas where, you know, these were tried figures. Like the, you know. Start to think, hey, we probably have some guidelines. And, and there are in two areas, one, what Brady mentioned, the, the uh inadvertent conversion of purely private social media uh activity by. Official forum or is it city? Conversion of that private, you know, uh exchange into public information if it relates to city business that creates trouble. That's that's what being a federal. And the other issue is, is that more serious, it, it's uh. There've been a number of jurisdictions that have been, that have actually been challenged in court over First Amendment viewpoint discrimination. And that has risen in situations where uh it's private social. Media activity that has the ability to kind of pick and choose who the user engages with. Uh, uh, or, or gives the user the ability to decomments or offensive or. Official employees might have, have uh the allegations been that that's a form of viewpoint discrimination or denial of that. To uh. Do uh, if elected officials for. And so uh. T M L given some recommendations, other entities that represent. They, they, they end up in. He's training. Randy. Uh, and the recommendations there that, that, that communities that use social. Uh, free, uh, there's some guidelines, they're delineating what is official communication in the town, what is official use of, of social media. Uh, and that there are, of course, that once it becomes official, there is a guideline that, that will apply that uh to. Viewpoint neutral, if there is interaction with public or the utility of the public to post or comment on. On social media, which I, I don't, I'm not sure if all of our social media, that's how, do you have a Facebook?
Yeah.
So that, so there'll be the ability to make comment here, but those comments can't be, because they're critical of city due or. And so it's, it's in those situations where, you know, your, your inability to comment is not based on content that comes. Just essentially, they're being branded across the board, there's no issue there with. So what policy does is, is delineate what are your. And make sure that the basis is any purely private, fully elected officials of, of, of your own social media. To, to eat it private, not, not engage with it in a particular uh at, at your official capacity as. Uh, but you, you're, you're free to, to, as, as, as private citizens to say whatever you want about social media to interact with whoever you choose to interact with. And not interact with those two thousand. And, and so the, the policies there are a, a head of eye. And specify that anything that's not part of that. Is not the responsibility of the town, there are no possibilities for the blind, there are no, there's no ability to create uh criminal record. In these situations. But that's, you're that, first, uh purely person. And uh, so this is, again, consistent with a lot of policies. Been enough by other jurisdictions, they've adopted that same saying, that their nation, that, that city administration. So I'm recommending that we. If there's a resolution that passed, you will just. Affirming that we are about. Giving the town the ability to, to make any change for us.
The, the, what is that, what, what would the residents?
Because we, we're, we're, we're adopted K, a uh, it's a communication social policy. That delineates official communication channels of the town and makes recommendations to not inadvertently turn private communication.
And what would be your recommendation to the town?
Uh, that, that if, if, if you uh are, you, you, you all have the ability to, to direct uh the use of the town officials. So that'll, that gets reviewed by administration for me, so there's no issue there, if you have a uh. A, a, a town or you have social media success that, that reports where you're reporting to speak in your, your official capacity. As elected representative of the town. Uh, that it, it be. Your, your engagement with, with uh your constituents. Can't, can't be uh limited to only that context, or to the content that. Of where you're, you're not able to. Uh, comments, there are now guidelines due uh anywhere in a number of situations where deletion of program indicates violates the term service of the. Saying, I think that's clearly obscene or pornographic of those. Uh, that, that the constitution does not protect. But any, any sort of disagreement or anything like that, it's, it's. It's, it has to, has to be there, has to, has to, any, any member of the public that wants to engage with you on a, on a, on a, on a social media platform. Cause you're reporting to speak in your official capacity. You gotta, gotta let those comments uh. Stand. I, I don't know that it's ever been issued, uh, or, 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 if either any. Members of this body have a, a, a social media presence where it says that is according to be in the name of the U S or this fastest route. Uh, and so this, you know, the, the, your, your activity. On social media that is, again, purely personal, purely private, where you're using it as speaking as a private citizen, cannot want to be anyway constrained. By this office, I don't know. Free as private citizens to engage with whoever you, you want, however you want, uh on a social media platform. But if it's, if it's something that is in the name of. Council member so and so's Facebook page, council member so and so's next door page. Solubility of comments or engaging with constituents on that basis. Uh, it, it, there, there, there's a policy will apply to it. And uh. Make sure that we don't do anything on it that run about constitutional principles or, or open government principles. That, that's basic.
Did you say that this is a bright for employees before?
Yes, and that for employees, there are only a certain number of employees within the town that are authorized to use those communication channels, so it delineates. That, that any non-authorized use or privated and any member of, any employee that is on social media supporting. People back to town, try to engage in town business using that for personal uh social media platforms, that that is not official communication. We are not responsible for that, so that's the way that violating the standards of this uh policy and subject.
Got it. I did notice on. Now, this policy, you don't keep this?
Yes.
There.
One thing. Five. On C one, C four, C nine, and. Remove, they got the titles from profiles, you should recognize I agree those. Thankfully saved.
How, how constituents communicate during.
So like on my social media, I do have titles that I hold and to give them.
Well, the, you, you can, if you delete, if you delete, like if you. If you hold yourself out as a council member. Uh, and, and it's, and it's your.
Right, well.
Personal, well, if it, if it's a social media platform that you're using to engage with, with constituents. Uh, as opposed to do, doing purely personal thing, like posting pictures of. Events that you family. Then, then uh the, the risk is, concern is that it might be considered a major town. Uh, and, and thereby restricting your ability to only engage. So, so by deleting that or by, by making sure that it's purely personal, identifies someone. You don't, you don't overhave. Is here.
In that particular, in that particular. Fine. Is this? Can this be used for other entities like matches? Would it be used for like? People that hold positions in our district or?
Well, it would, it would be up to the water district.
No, but like, it could, in general. Uh, or are you making more specific?
I mean, I, there are references to town with the, you said in it and. I mean, I, I, you know, if someone, if whoever, the legal representative for the water district would, would like a copy, I'm happy to give it to.
Oh, just make the.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's.
Okay.
I mean, and there are, you'll find things here that are, that, that are in common with, with uh the work product of other. Town that I, that I use, that I incorporate. And look at, oh, that's a good idea, I was like, damn. So, no, I, I, I'm certainly. Uh, available to anyone who might to adopt, adapt it for, for a, a different government.
Yeah. Sorry, it's weird, to the point. And. Thank you, but.
Yeah, that's very good.
Hey, that's what it is.
No, I am. Okay.
Don't call them comment. Raise the heart will have to do. Uh, you can, you can regard in town.
So.
See, that comes from, from many things, that comes from. Yeah.
Also, remember, yes. Remember, I know. Mayor partner.
Yes. Ten thirteen, second session. You wait for those sessions in four minutes, you'll be able to inbound. Regarding heat matters on the agenda for school success and by side one, one zero seven one. On state, one town attorney, five, five, one, one zero seven two, liberation regarding built property. Five, five, one, point oh seven, for deliberation regarding personnel matters, five, five, one, point oh eight seven. Liberation regarding economic development, just cases. For those who want to go into session. All right. All right. We'll need to take a session.
The. You can.
Awesome.
You're bad.
Yes.
May.
How is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. They, they could like. Nothing to discuss or actually taken. On item fifteen, city manager report.
So, council, I wanted to give um. I wanna do a. I wanted to remind everybody, I listen about the highlights of the, of the website. So um.
From page two.
So this is the home page that you have.
That should, sorry.
Um, we have all the bars up at the top, um, and if you scroll down a little bit. You have our link to our Facebook page, a link to the calendar page, our address, and so forth. This is what we call the news in the Vina Vista, this is where we post um a meeting. You can get the link of the agenda right there from the um, the first page. And um we keep, uh, there's six, uh, six items up there, so it's the last six things that are posted. Um, so uh those just stay kind of in date order. The only thing that's um, like the fluctuation notice, those have to stay up for a certain amount of time, so those will stay until we have to take down, so, so on and so forth. So um, just go back up to the top. Um, so when you have your directional menus at the top, the, the first thing that um you can go to at the calendar. Here, any of the flyers we make that we advertise on social media, we put on the, on the calendar, you can click on a date on the left and it'll show you with um. It'll tell you what's on that day. Um, so that's one of the, the things we're going to be, as the goals for the, the. Going forward is just making sure, um, I, I have this conversation with our, our library team today, you know, uh, by January first, we should have the calendar of events ready from January to December. You know, you can fill out some details, but just uh really trying to get our calendar um created um along with this, we are going to start doing the actual Facebook events. Um, reason being, said with a, we get a lot of complaints, oh, we didn't know what's going on, well, social media is all about algorithms, right? So um, we need to start posting the events, we need um council, we need our boards to also start. R S V P to the event, so it shares it to y'all's page, so we can start increasing our, our social media presence, so the uh that. Um, the, if you want to departments. And go to a library. So the library, this is one of the ones that I've spent a lot, we've spent a lot of time on, um, you can click on the get your library card and um submit your library application. You can go visit our, our book catalog online, scroll down a little more. Um, if you click the library, the, the advisory board, you wasn't here at the library, you just uh, the, the library advisory board is there.
Uh, on the floor, on the book library, there's a book catalog.
So that goes to you to our biblionics where you would go and see what books you wanted to check out, so if you have your, your reading online. So any of the audio books that you checked out.
So, that, that, it also, if you, if you don't use this page, it's also like cool because if you scroll down just a little bit. Well, a little bit more. So right on the right hand side where it says what's hot and what's new, you can click on what's new and it will show you everything new in the library, you can go a week, two weeks, three weeks.
And we have all those resources to on the left.
We have all those resources on the left. And if you log in with your account, they're like with your library card, if you log in, then you can reserve a book or. Renew a book or make a list of books you wanna read or.
So um. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, so if you go back. Um, so it has the library advisory board, it has the ordinance, the, the, both of that advisory board, um, the, the board handbook, you know, it's just a generic um handbook of what, how we took the advisory boards get. Um, then if we click on the friends of the library. It has all the friends of the library information, um, has who's there, they can sign up for the friends library membership application, if you click that, you can um sign up for the friends of the library. Um, it has obviously their, their payment link for the Q R code that you can pay for your membership. Um, the, the highlighted links are obviously hyperlinks for, for email addresses, um, so. So, so that's for the friends of the library, that's one that um, I guess I've been trying a lot, I'm trying to be effective with the library, so. Getting your attention and um different activities, you can see our, our events that we have, uh, the friends of the library, they're real active in, in getting events to go, our next one is a stuffy sleepover. So all the kids get to bring their stuffed animal and they'll chop them off at the library and check them in for the sleepover, the staff will. Rearrange them and put them in different places, and so when the kids come back in the morning, their stuffed animals will have pictures about all of these. So, you know, they still have to be with the stuff. So um, and then we have on Wednesday, once a month, a nutrition class with the, with the adults, um, that one is super popular, I think that one's add up to an average of what, twenty-ish? Um, adults that come to that class regularly, so um, really getting some motion next, we'll go back up to the top. Um, so if you go to the whole occupancy tax um page. This is where you have anything about the whole occupancy tax, um, if you wanna contact us, this is where you can, you can fill out the application on the right hand side and submit it via online. It gives all about the hot tax on the left, um, you know, explaining it, um, the registration point. Um, the, then you can have the PDF form right there, and blue hotel occupancy registration form, um, you can either pay your uh hot fee online, if you like. And um, so that's that page for the hotel occupancy tax registration, and just in case everyone gets burned, you have the rentals in about like thirty days. We'll go back up to the top. And then you have your rentals and business page. So, right here's your local businesses, there's the left hand arrow that goes to the right of the left. That, um, this, uh, has any, um, businesses that, um, have supported us, that have been, um, sponsors or that are local. Okay, and then we go down and we, we separated out, um, the, the realtors and, um, and then, uh. I'm gonna go down just a little more. And so then this is the, this is my favorite part, so this is the, the hotel occupancy ordinance right there too, you're right. But so if somebody's here and they say, or somebody's going, yeah, I wanna stay in the Bonavista, I don't know about you guys, but Airbnb, BBRO, you know, you search on there and you're not sure what, you know, things important about come up. So, here, you can put, pull, pull back down. So, put in the bedrooms and bathrooms.
Oh, yeah. And, uh, and the search.
And the search right there were some bedrooms. Just got two. And I've got two on the bathrooms, so I wanna stay, and then two bedrooms, two bathrooms available in the Bonavista. So, we search. And those are, now, so let me give you the, the, our, our ordinance that, um, you don't have to be registered and have a, uh, permit issued from the Bonavista. And that your description in your listing has to have the permit number. So, what the criteria was for the team was to find the listing for the address. And make sure that it had the, um, permit number listed in the description. So, of the hundred and thirty-five, uh, thirty-seven permits that we have issued, um, there are about only forty that are actually full compliance of having, um. And we searched, um, BBRO, we searched Airbnb, and, um, and so we're, we're gonna make another push to, um. We've kinda made it be that responsibility of the permit owner to make sure everything is, is updated. Um, we're, we're finding that, um. They're, they're just not updated, so we want everyone that's, we want all hundred and thirty-seven properties to be listed on here at whatever at some point. So, um, that's what we're, we're doing to make sure that, you know, these are strictly what, you know, um, registered to, to give another asset of just, you know, being able to look for rentals that are available just here then. So, um, uh. And then, and then if you went, if you go back, um, go back to property. And then go back all the way down. And then, I'll just go, but then you'll just, they're all just listed there with the same arrow, so we just wanted to scroll through and see. So, um, it's, it's super interactive and, um.
The rentals.
The rentals, so this is all for the hotel occupancy tax. And so, um, hopefully, hoping to, you know, if we send somebody to our site and they, hey, what's, what's available in the Bonavista? If someone's here, you know, instead of, um, having to put. The other, yeah. Um, now these links will take them to their BBRO link or the Airbnb, so we don't do any of the mandates. We don't wanna have anything to do with collecting money, reservations, or anything like that, so, um, and then, um.
But it's good promotion for those rentals to have them on the city website, and that's, that's pretty cool.
Well, that's what we thought, and I thought, you know, it's, um, it's definitely a work in progress, but I think that, and we're hoping that'll motivate more people to be like, hey, I want my page, how do I get on it?
Yeah.
So, um, uh, uh, so that, that's what we're, we're hopeful that it will just, uh. And make, make it a little bit easier, so somebody searches, searches Bonavista, they see rentals, you know, it's always kind of right there, so that's kind of the goal of it. And if you go up to the top. The last one is, um, document downloads. So, you know, one of, we've had a big, um, push for our complaints about, you know, we can't find ordinances, we can't, um, things aren't on there. Um, so go back up, yeah, I see that, so there's a search, um, document name up here. So, you can search for what you want. Um, don't, don't select anything that's in front of you. Yeah, if it's linking what a document is. So, let's just say you wanna know about the, the latest tax document, what's the tax, so you can type in the word tax. Search. And the, the, I say recent, you know, twenty twenty-two, um, documents are there. So, type in the word dog. And I go.
Did you get, Mr. Ozon, did you get ready on that one? Okay. Pause.
So, and if you sort of animal, is that animal, it's not just the dog.
Uh, so. I guess I'll make sure right, right away. The big and libraries, we, we, right, walls. Okay. And it's only search thousands of books. And we only have hundreds of organs. And it looks like this compared to what that looks like. That's, that's, that's my issue. Well, I understand that, and, and so we talked about, um, codification of all of our organs.
Right.
Okay, and, and it isn't like a wish now, now it's a demand. Okay, that, the, the, the codification of all of our organs will take place.
Yes.
Okay. This, it needs to be. Much more like that situation that's compared to this. Okay, these are the laws of our town. And it needs to be very straightforward, easily found, um. And like, and, and a codification, I mean, it's just what it is.
So, the uni-code is the, is the organization that the island animals, residents had, uh, used to do that. Um, I have, um, met with them to give us an estimate, but when they pass them, they, they don't do the, uh, they don't do. After it's in its electronic format, then they will do the coding to make it searchable. So, I, I would take the planning to everything. Um, so, so that will be that the biggest one is to be getting everything scanned in, um, and so we can do like a UVO, um, have a document, um. Uh, they have a service that they could come in and scan everything, or we can just sit and, you know, scan it, um, with a, a, yeah, and, and, um. So, so, um, well, and we'll, we'll, we'll see what the cost comparison is of what it would cost to have everything scanned versus, um.
We'd be, uh, AI programs. So much better than these. And so.
When we combine it, the push scanner, like a scanner, like there's, there's, it's inexpensive scanning, so. So, um.
Do we have ordinances or not in the general form?
Well, like the older ones, did he think that's happened, so, um, when, when I started, started scanning and, and putting on there and doing things, so, um, we have those, but things that are, that are older, um, haven't been, uh, scanned in. Well, I mean, like, there's some more, like, the ones that we use a lot are, you know, and a lot of those are on here, like our, our common ones. But to sit here and say that every ordinance that we have since inception, they're, they're not, we have all the books that have everything, um, you know, the. What do you call them, the official, the, the ones that are on the numbered pages that we have in the, in the books, on the. Well, the minute books, yeah, but they're ordinances, they're all like the. Yeah, so, those go back into, you know, since the, the first ordinance of, of the town. So, um, it'll take some, some time to, to scan and, and do that, but, I mean, it's, it's, um. The website's ready to be able to handle that now, so then the, the website and the uni-code will, um, write the code. And then they will, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
And one other thing, so. We talked about ordinance going way back, so. Not every ordinance that, that the town, uh, adopts, uh, is, uh, results in, in something that will appear in the town's. Like, anything that is a regulation, would be, would be part of the provision on these laws. Uh, but we also pass orders that are not, uh, that will impact, but, so, so there's, there. I, I'm not sure what the service wants from us, but it, it probably won't be every single one.
Well, that's what, whatever we give them, so whatever we say that's.
One of the people that will.
Will be.
Yeah, those are the things that like, it's like the, the laws of the town that are all in order.
Right, and we used it, that like, um, the one I've seen, so I found one in the library, going through all the library, there's a, uh. It almost looks like a statue binder, right, and so it had, um, the, what I call the, the theme, so we're, we're. I think that, um, it's.
Well, let me talk.
Uh-huh.
So, we may do that, I, I thought it was fine. But what you.
Right, exactly, so it, it's just a matter of, um, making sure we have all of those, getting them scanned in, and then, um, and then giving to somebody, and then we're totally wrong. And if you're, you may have to have a budget limit to give the, the fund for it, but all of that will come to you guys for, uh, a vote and, um, uh, the steers.
Okay.
But did you, that takes.
Well, I think that from where just getting this landmark of, of the website. That's why the other city manager was here. Didn't know it. So, like, to give them uni-code, that's a huge, that would be.
And I can remember, you know. But, I think it's one, but. It's, uh, it's sort of, um, I can't remember whether, if uni-code does it for you, if it appears on your website or. There. I, I didn't, I do that. Yeah, I did a search to see the government's, uh, direct to. The, their president, so, so, but I can't remember now, it's a front end that was, the county website was, was. A logo, uh. But, but that.
Someday, and when you go to the ordinance, it's unique.
So, I think, so it's felt that, that's the website.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll tap in, so they come here and they search, and then the automatic.
Goes there, you know, it'll, it'll go to their website. Right, and the, there's the local and the state statutes.
Yeah.
Right, and so.
The major ones are on the website. Yeah. Exactly.
Right, and, and, and right now, the, it, it is, it is searchable and it, it's good of the names that we put in it, so, you know, we try to name things and have the, the description be what kind of, um, looking at. And, um, it'll just, it'll probably be totally different. Rolled up, uh, so, um. So, if you have any questions. Be happy to.
Do you want to get the pictures, no pictures?
Yeah, so go to the, um, the department. Um. So, it's looking, the, what's up, we're looking at the bay.
Clouds.
Oh, that's.
Oh, yeah, that was the goodest. And then, um, top. Um.
Chicken. Do you like to be?
He gives a clever time, which is one of the things.
I'll go back up to the town. Um, then on the advisory board, um, like that. So, this is each one of the advisory boards.
Thanks, I was. Yeah, sure.
So, um, the community, click on the community development, which is the next one.
Sure.
And, um, well, this one, uh, it was, this program is not the chance, but you got a way through. These were ones that I was brought over from the, um, the old website, but, but what I wanna show you is like, so, um, I read in and I found the, the CD file laws, the, the articles of the corporation. So, anything that we have related to the award, um, itself, um, I tried to link it there, so, um. If you had a question of what is the CD board, or, you know, anything like that, so, um, the, the ethics board, I don't even, we haven't appointed anybody in the ethics board since I've been here, but, um. Yeah, those are the.
Yes.
And, um, so, so on and on. Um, so, uh, so those are the ones that you.
It's like a street say.
Um, the Mr. Doppel was found, he's in the other day that I wanna add to the website, the.
Lafayette.
I know, and that what we have, each of the, the departments, I think that's in the part Lafayette and the Lafayette there, um.
The trail, it'd be nice to have the trail there, the Eco Tourism Center, is there a link on there for Eco Tourism Center or no?
Um, I don't know if we have a link to that.
That's a thing.
So, um.
Well, no, but. Very good for you.
So, um, that, that's that for the, the, the website, so. For the, the grants, you know, the grants. Um, let me just introduce Hector Cudill, this is our new library director, he started today.
Thank you. Gentlemen, ladies.
So, we're, we're excited to, to have them, uh, come start with us, and, um, we've raised net, um.
Fifteen.
Um, and being wrote out, today we have, um, ninety-eight stickers for the recycling program. Um, we have a duty that will be on staff for the next four weeks, for, for certain, so I'll have Saturday, you guys, uh, recycling program. At the end, kind of monitor what can recycle. Um, the truck was full a little before, a little after, um, eleven, and, um, but I, I remember that, that it sustained, so, well, you know, we get some complaints about. Oh, I do it, and it was already gone, you know, and so I told her, I wanna, I wanna keep track of, um, how many people are coming after eleven that, that need to recycle, so we can, you should start giving us a report on that. How many pounds are actually recycled, so we can kind of compare over the next five, eight months of, of what's actually being recycled, um. This is still by far the best option, but just to let you guys know more about data and serving the, on the programs, and, um.
Everything.
Sorry. Is it, wasn't it, wasn't the problem that it was full at like nine thirty?
Yeah.
Then leave, so if it's not full till eleven, that's, that's a.
Oh, I'm saying, give them the. Right, right, I mean, that, that was would be the, you know, we know it's a kind of conflicting story, but yeah, that, so that's kind of another reason we have, um, Judy out there, just to kind of get, we, um, uh, yeah, just to kind of keep an eye on it, but. We're hoping that making it be residents only, that people from other communities are getting the word out, that they have to be able to come and.
Do you know if people showed up at the lockers?
Yes, there were some, and Judy had, um, application forms and was, you know, educating, uh, educating and advising, I think she had over.
There was not.
Oh, that were not residents, I don't, I don't, there were people that were not registered, but I don't know if she determined if they were residents or not, I do. Yeah, it's, they weren't registered, so she gave them the information about the, I don't know if she asked the part, but. I think we've only had, I think we've had about two people that are just really angry about it, that they shouldn't have to have a sticker to, to reach, but, you know, I figured two people, um, that, that's a pretty good. Yeah, so, um, but that was, um, in, in, uh, full, full swing, and, um.
The Weedy Lot Letters.
Uh-huh.
Um, are they coming, are they coming in the, in the mail like a, like a postcard?
No.
I got something in the mail.
Right.
And I was like. That's, and I was like, my grass is not that hard, so I get a look at my grass, but, and it's.
Right.
Other than, you know.
Yeah, no, no, that, that was general information.
Ah, okay.
But when we do the Weedy Lot Letters, it is a, it is a official letter that, that code enforcement sent here to say, hey, your lot's in tie, if you don't, you have seven days to rectify it before we do the first one.
Okay.
And, um, we thought about, what is it, about six properties that we regularly are, are forcing away, because they just get, we have got two, um, we've got the big one on, um, the offlot, and, um, we'll put two on, on the, um, the valve course. And, um, the bank is just deciding to, 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 um, mow it, and then they pay the bill for, you know, we said, so if they don't pay within thirty days, we get the filing on the property.
Oh, wow.
And they always pay them, they have thirty days, so, um, we're gonna talk to my first, you know, about how we change. Can we just start introducing, I mean, I mean, the point is not for us to be there, you know, so, um, that, that one is better. But, well, that's what we're saying, that we need a, we need a.
Yeah, and they want it to.
Right.
And the big one's over a thousand dollars, I mean.
Wow.
So, this is a lot, and, but that's cheaper than what they would pay, um, really, like, right, it's cheaper than what they would pay if they have to commit it, so.
It's fine, you know, is that.
Hmm.
Well, that's like. Right. So, so those are kind of, so many things, and now that we're enforcing regularly that, that, you know. Um, update the ordinance, or we fix the fines, or whatever kind of happens, or something like that, so that's kind of, um, um, let's go over with the, because we have the same problem with Tango, because, um. We find them, they pay the fines, and by the time their court date comes up, well, the trash is picked up, the fine is paid, and what, what do you do, right? So, we had it, just a couple of weeks ago, we had a, you know, there's.
Everyone's out, not there, you know, Tango Wood?
I mean, I'm sorry, not Tango, but I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you know.
But in Tango Wood, everyone's already out, right?
Right, that's my understanding of it, so nobody.
They're all, they're all fixed up.
Yeah, they've been fixed up, okay.
Yeah, and they. Yeah. And they, um, they're working on it and they're, they're getting ready to submit for, uh, patients for the, the damage basically. But so, you know, in Tango, they, they just pay the citation fee and then, or fee space. And then by the time it comes around, it's, it's, it's all taken care of again. So they just, you know, they don't want to pay the, the monthly fee of four hundred dollars to have a second recite where it's been, or the second trash bin. So they just pay our, our citation. And so that's probably, I think, like the problem. So this wasn't a, a one, a two piece with them. So that we're going to try to, we're supposed to do something that, that, the, the, so, um, we're, we'll keep trying it. That was, yeah, we're going to find people with some habitual injuries. We got to figure out this.
And I would like to hear from the director if it's okay, if he doesn't mind speaking like a little bit about yourself, where you're from. We just read it here on the neighborhood.
All right. All right.
Good.
Um, good, good. Um, so, I'm from Bronco. Uh, majority of my background is indigenous roots, right? Family from the Laguna. Toto la Marina, on Bernardo, the Alipa. Again, professional education, business life, uh, prior to my education background. Um, basically, I'm a teacher or certified teacher, right? So we're exposure of, uh, library experience too as well, um, retail provider, uh, customer service based. So I enjoy helping others, serving others, the community too. So I'm excited to serve you guys, serve the community of La Vina Vista. And, uh, again, to help us others to, to learn, like, for the deration library, uh, is a resource to basically gain any form of, how do you say, additional information free of cost, right? So that's why I took this job. I'm excited. So I look forward for learning from you guys and the community too as well. I don't know, any questions you guys have, me?
What do you think about? I agree. She's intimidating.
No, yeah, actually, I, if anything, I'm, yes, it's, it's. So, but, and honestly, uh, I appreciate her and, and I value her.
Yeah. Awesome. I appreciate that.
Yeah. So if, if anything, uh, I want to make her job.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
That's cool. Welcome.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So I, I will, because anybody can read these, the other questions, but I think that they're everything, um, all the department reports are, are in the, in the pre-manager report and, um,
Oh. A bit to guard that.
There is.
Thanks.
It's, it's.
Oh, yeah.
You can't deal with her?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
That's a little, I want to get.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks for the time.